Good evening. Today is Tuesday, January 28th, 2014. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
The next agenda item is public input. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the school committee this evening? Could you just state your name and address for the record?
Yes. Hi, Ray Garcia, 497 Charlton Street, registered voter and taxpayer. I've got a problem with the new middle high school. The doors are always locked. Right now, it's been like, I think tonight was five, with the windshield up there, probably minus zero. Little kids standing there, running up to the school, myself getting out of my vehicle, banging on the door to get into my own building. We were told when the school was going up, there's access for people to the auditorium to an event, to the cafeteria, and to the gymnasium. The rest of the school is locked for security. Can't get into the school to even get into those places. I'd like to know why. What events happening? Tonight, there's a game. I got up there early to drop off two girls. Doors were locked. I'd like to know why. I mean, I am a taxpayer, voted for it, voted for people, and now it's completely different.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. If I just may quickly, you had mentioned this concern to me at the last school committee meeting in the audience, and I did write a note to the superintendent and asked him to look into it. I will follow up on where that stands, and I will get back to you.
Okay, because, well, he works for us, and I would like an answer fairly fast. Is it still cold out there for the next 10 days?
Right. I just didn't know if it was a security issue or what the issue was, so I was asking for that.
Well, they know what's happening. They've got a list. If they could have a custodian unlock the door, rest of the place is locked up, and then lock it at night, I could understand, but...
Your point's well taken. I will follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could get your phone number later, or if you want to leave it?
Okay, I'll leave it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the school committee this evening? Seeing none, we'll call the meeting to order at 7:03. Roll call vote, please. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Olivo?
Present.
Ms. Congdon?
Present.
Dr. Domingo?
Present.
Ms. Donovan?
Present.
Ms. Quinney?
Present.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Present.
All present?
Thank you. The next motion to the approval of minutes, regular school committee meeting, January 14th, 2014. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Congdon, seconded by Dr. Domingo. Is there any discussion? Ms. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only question I had, I didn't know if it was a clarification that needed to be made under Section 3, Part C, about the people who were intended in attendance at our last meeting. They state that Rose's name, and then shortly after, that she was a member of student council. And I believe that she's here as a representative of our student advisory committee. So I would just like to perhaps clarify, you know, her status as a student advisory committee representative rather than a member of the student council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other corrections, missions, changes? Seeing none, can we have a vote by show of hands? All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we'll review the special school committee meeting minutes of January 11th, 2014. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Domingo, seconded by Ms. Congdon. Is there any discussion? Dr. Domingo?
Madam Chair, I would like the second sentence on page 2 corrected to a full sentence. Dr. Domingo would like to see a list of actionable items.
See a list. Okay. Is there anything else? That's it? Thank you. Ms. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Same page, Section B, letter 3. It has my name for looking at capital improvement, and then thereafter is Ms. Congdon's name. And I wasn't sure, I didn't remember if she was going to help me with that, or is there a piece missing of what Ms. Congdon was going to do in addition to what I was doing? Her name's just kind of there.
If I may, I said I would help you.
Okay. I didn't remember. All right. Thank you. Then it's fine.
Is there anything else? Can I have a show of hands to accept the special school committee meeting minutes of January 11th? All in favor? Thank you. We'll move to chair woman's announcements. This evening, I just want to note that I have removed Agenda Item 14A, the signing of the contract between the Southbridge School Committee and the Southbridge Education Association. The only reason I'm removing that tonight is to, we don't have a conformed copy. We're in agreement substantively, we've ratified, but we just don't have the conformed copy. So at the next school committee meeting, we'll happily sign that in public. And at that time, we will also discuss and release information after the formal signing relative to that contract. At this time, however, I do want to address that there was an anonymous letter in the Southbridge Evening News, I'm not sure of the exact date, which...
January 22nd.
January 22nd, I'm told, which contained numerous errors regarding the teacher's contract. There were statements made that just were not correct regarding the length of the contract or the terms of the contract. I wrote to the newspaper editor. He acknowledged the newspaper didn't fact-check that letter, and the newspaper, it's my understanding, is going to print a correction. So we hope that when the contract is signed, it's formally released, and everybody will have a better understanding of what the length, the terms, and the conditions of that contract are. Just wanted to let everybody know that. I wanted to remind everybody that the school lunch price increase goes into effect next Monday, February 3rd. Lunch prices will increase from $2.25 to $2.50 per lunch per day. Parent-teacher conferences will be held next week at all of our schools. February 4th at the Southbridge Middle High School from 4:00 to 7:00, February 5th at West Street and Charlton Street Schools from 4:00 to 7:00, and February 6th at Eastford Road School from 4:00 to 7:00. We hope that many parents will take advantage of the opportunity to go speak to their child's teacher or teachers. It's a good opportunity to find out what's going on and to find out how children are And the superintendent is not here this evening. He was going to discuss the principal search committees, so we're going to also postpone that. An announcement will be posted on the district website, and we will update everybody at the next school committee meeting, and hopefully have a posting in the paper as well. Did I forget anything? Okay. This evening, there's no report from the representative of the student advisory committee. Rosa Brito was unable to attend. We will move on to school committee reports, and we're going to ask Ms. Donovan for a curriculum subcommittee report this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The curriculum subcommittee met last evening, Monday, January 27th, at 6:30 PM in Room M100 at 25 Colav. Present were myself and subcommittee members Dr. Domingo and Ms. Congdon. Also present were Pat Gardner, our Director of Teaching and Learning, and school committee member Erin Quinney. First order of business was to approve the December 9th, 2013 curriculum subcommittee minutes, and they were approved as written. Our first order of discussion was to look at our district's current Title I funding and initiatives. We reviewed some state mandates that regulate Title I, and Ms. Gardner informed us that at this point in time, we're pretty much tied into the Title I grants that we have, or we're kind of locked in for the ones that we have so far for this year. However, our subcommittee strongly feels that we would like to see an after-school program for all students whereby we would have competent teachers available in our schools after-school for homework help and to clarify any daily teachings. So together, we'll re-review the Title I budget and look, along with Ms. Gardner, to see if this program can in fact be generated. Our second order of business was to discuss our district's current English language learners initiatives. We all fully agree that we need to completely revamp our existing ELL program, and Dr. Domingo has volunteered to spearhead a proposal that we'd like to put together based on the European model of learning a foreign language that we wish to bring forward and discuss and hopefully provide some implementation for the upcoming school year. Our meeting adjourned at 8:10 PM, and our next meeting is Monday, February 24th, at 6:30 PM in Room M100. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee, Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The policy subcommittee met on January 15th. We reviewed Policy BDFA, and we also revised several policies that we'll be voting on later, and I'll keep my comments regarding what they were till that time. Our next meeting is scheduled for February 12th, and that will be at 6:30 in Room M100 at Colav. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Quinney, do you have anything to report for negotiations at this time?
I do not.
Thank you. Ms. Congdon, Family and Community Engagement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a meeting that is scheduled for Monday, February 3rd, at 6:30 in Room M100 on 25 Colav. Adam Minor of the Southbridge Evening News will be our guest speaker that evening, and also on our agenda is discussion of a parent-teacher-student compact, as well as discussions regarding an after-school program. So Monday, February 3rd, 6:30, Room M100 for the Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The SPEDPAC liaison report, Ms. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The SPEDPAC had a, their last meeting on January 16th, in which they discussed some concerns regarding transition that a family had articulated. They also discussed how to spend funds that were being currently raised by the Fraternal Order of Eagles, and, excuse me, they're setting up workshops that will be upcoming, beginning in March, a series of four, and Anita Poulain has volunteered to do those workshops. Right now, what the SPEDPAC is looking for is for parental input regarding what parents would like to see those workshops entail. If you're not able to come to the meeting, which will be February 20th at 6:00 PM in Room M100, you could email the SPEDPAC at southbridge.spedpac@gmail.com, or you can go to Facebook and look up the Southbridge SPEDPAC on Facebook. And any issues that you'd like to see addressed regarding a workshop, Anita Poulain is a sensory certified occupational therapist, so if you have any questions particular to that, that would be helpful in order to set up the workshops that would best meet the needs of both children's, children, their families, and teachers as well. So that is it. February 20th at 6:00 PM. If not, please contact the SPEDPAC with any ideas or requests for, to be contained in those workshops. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This evening, we're pleased to have a couple of presentations, and we'd like to start with the Pioneer Athletic Booster Association. We'd like to welcome Ms. Kelly Gibo and Ms. Kim Hogan to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having us. My name is Kelly Gibo, and I serve as President of the Pioneer Athletic Booster Association. And this is Kim Hogan, who serves as Secretary of PABA. We come here tonight to share with you some exciting happenings within our athletic structure. We proudly purchased 18 new uniforms, which we have here, for the middle school girls' basketball team. They are now wearing them with Pioneer pride. They were super excited, we were super excited. We worked with Mr. Tom Vangel at the Logo Shop here in Southbridge, and we came up with what we feel is a fantastic uniform that represents Southbridge well. Thank you again to the Logo Shop for his generosity and time and savings. Tonight, we'd like to officially and publicly present the uniform to the team captain, Ms. Brittany Cullen, team coach, Ms. Brittany Cullen, and the team captain, Ms. Elizabeth Gibo. So here you are, guys. They're wearing them already, but, yes, absolutely. Please do.
As coach of the middle school girls' basketball team for the past two years, I just have nothing but great things to say, especially about PABA, and we really appreciate, myself and the student athletes, the funds that it took for you guys to go out of your way to present us with new uniforms. Not only helps the girls' self-esteem, but the team morale in whole, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, a quick little side note, because Elizabeth did just come from, Elizabeth and coach did just come from their game tonight. Elizabeth is, yes, that's my daughter, too, but she is at 99 points for the season, so for her, she's doing really, really well. It was an exciting game for her, and she's hoping to hit 100 points this Friday. So good luck, Lizzie, at Quabog.
And lastly, I'd like to introduce our three student representatives for this school year. They will serve on the Pioneer Athletic Booster Association Board. All applicants were to fill out an application, answering pertinent questions, submit three letters of recommendations from teachers, staff, coach, or community leaders. We would like to extend a big congratulations to our three student representatives, and introduce to you tonight, one of them could not be here. That is Ms. Nadie Ramirez, who is in grade 11. We have Mr. John Hogan, you want to come up? Mr. John Hogan, grade 10. Congratulations, John. And Ms. Elizabeth, who is in grade 7. We are very proud to have these young leaders on our board and bring a fresh perspective, ideas, and be a voice to their peers, of their peers. And, yeah, they've already served at one of our meetings and had awesome input, and it has changed things up a bit, and we think it's really important for them. It's a great bridge for student athletes and the adult part of this all. And, yeah, so congratulations again to you guys. And we thank you for the time and all that you do for what we do. We can't even imagine what you guys do, so thank you, really. And we will continue to change the world, one athlete at a time.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. This is very much appreciated. All of your hard work. Thank you. Keep up the good work. My apologies, I forgot to introduce Pat Gardner, our Director of Teaching and Learning, earlier when I mentioned that the superintendent wasn't able to be here. Pat's kind of doing a fill-in for him. We certainly appreciate that. I don't know if you want to introduce our next two guests, perhaps? Am I putting you on the spot?
I think I can do that.
Okay.
Good evening. I just want to say that the superintendent regrets not being here. He's a little under the weather, and he said that in a 45-year career, he had missed three important meetings previously to this one, so tonight is the fourth in 45 years that he missed, so that's a pretty good track record. We have wonderful partners this year helping us with data and helping us with professional development, and I'm excited for all of you to hear the presentation by Brett Bishop from Focus on Results and Mickey Buell from ANET.
Great. Thank you, Pat. Is it best for us to stand here while we're presenting? Is that good? Good spot to be? Yeah, okay. As Pat said, I'm Brett Bishop over at Focus on Results, and one of the things that our organization has done in districts, as Pat mentioned, is do professional development. And I just wanted to say, first of all, how appreciative both Mickey and I are to be able to be in front of you here tonight, and also to be working in a district where my first experience in coming to your district was in August, and a really hot, nice day where there was no school, and there were almost 50 professionals from your district ready to do a full day of professional development. And I work in a lot of districts, and to be in a district where there's that much commitment and that much excitement about school turnaround and improvement was really remarkable, and it really blew me away to have that first touch with the staff here. So I have so much to be proud of, and I really value the opportunity to be working with all those folks. So Buzz just asked us to come here tonight because he wanted to make sure that we were sharing with you what the work that our organizations do when we come into your district. Where the state of Massachusetts identifies the organization we work for is in a group called Priority Partners. And what they ask is that when we're working in districts, as you have the Focus on Results and ANET working, that we would not work separately, you know, unto ourselves, but integrate our work so that the work sort of is accelerated exponentially rather than just working side by side. So one of the things we're trying to do tonight is to show you how our organization's content works, but how it works together, and that's our aim in the conversation that we'll have. This first document, and I mentioned to you before, I know you folks had this email to you, but the first document here that you were looking at is one that is a description of what your leaders are calling "Southbridge Moves." And it's the idea of, in school districts across the country, one of the things we hear is that people say, "Well, jeez, you know, every year, something new. We don't, we don't, we just get going with something, and then it's gone." And what we know, and when schools are really improving, what's happening is really good work is done, and it isn't just year to year. That really good leadership is put in place, and it is something that is enduring even leadership changes and new people coming in. And this document that is here describes a seven-area framework, known as "Southbridge Moves" in this district, that is describing what that framework is and what that means when we say these things will be here regardless if they were changes or new people to come in. And you can see that each of these things that's written here, basically, it's a statement to say, "This is what we believe in. If you, if you work here, if you send your kids here to go to school, these are the things that you can expect because these are the things that we hold near and that we believe in." And the seven-area framework that's there, if you just want to go to the next slide, the seven-area framework that's there, there's a little more, on the next pages of the presentation that you have, there's a little more description of each of those seven areas. This is a framework that we use in our organization, Focus on Results, and working in districts to help us to, every one of those things that you see, none of them is sort of a revolutionary notion. None of them is a crazy thing that you wouldn't think about if you worked in schools, but what we talk about is that unless we're really intentional as leaders in identifying those things in the work that we do, then what happens is some of it goes on, but it's not part of a system, a system that makes us better every day than we were yesterday. As a former principal, what I always knew, and what I know when working with people in Southbridge, we're tired at the end of the day, we're tired at the end of the week, we've worked hard, we've cared a lot. What I couldn't say about my school as a principal was, for my efforts and for the work that I do, I couldn't say that we necessarily were better today than we were, than we were yesterday. What I know is, we did a lot to help kids, we cared a lot about kids, but we weren't sure that all our efforts were giving us the results for student achievement that we wanted, and were we building a system that was going to be a continuous improvement system where we knew we would be getting better by the work that we were doing. So these seven areas that are outlined here begin with what's called an instructional focus, which basically is around the idea that says, we're, in schools, we're, traditionally, what's happened is, we've done 1,000 things, and none of them really well. And what we know is that we're stretching ourselves way too thin. And what we have to do is figure out instructionally, how can we narrow and tighten what we do so that we're not doing 1,000 things, but we're doing small number of really high-leverage things very well? So coming to an instructional focus is a process that your schools have all done, where they identify, if we got really, really good, and really we became experts on the one thing that we wanted our kids to be really good at, that we think would affect all things, what would that be? So, for example, in your elementary schools, oftentimes what happens when people do the process we go through, they'll come up with something like, for example, reading comprehension. So the premise of that is, if kids can get really good at comprehending what they read, science will get better, math will get better, social studies will get better, student behavior will get better, because reading comprehension is a way of thinking that helps kids in all those areas. So once they set that instructional focus, you can see the other parts of the framework. For example, Area 2, talking about teachers collaborating and coming together in support of the instructional focus. And Area 3, coming to a narrow set, small set of best practices that are designed to support the instructional focus. Best practices being defined as small set of things that every teacher is going to be doing in every classroom, every day. So we have to make sure that those are really high-leverage practices that will support, say, for example, reading comprehension. Once we get that in place, then we know that just saying that we're going to have an instructional focus, and just saying we have these practices, doesn't mean that everyone will know how to do it. What we have to do in schools is recognize that we have to be doing professional development that's targeted and continuous so that they're getting better, and that we are understanding that some teachers may already be really good at those instructional practices, but others may be on the other end of the exposure to expectation continuum. So we have to support them in a differentiated way with targeted professional development so that they can get better. Area 5 talks about the idea that we have to take a look at our resources, put them on the table, and say, "How are we going to know whether we're going to get the most out of all of our resources? Not just money, but time, talent, energy? And we're not going to do things just because it's the way we've always done them, we're going to do things because they're really good for kids." Area 6 is about the idea of engaging families and community. And Area 7 is the idea that with all of these things, we have to have a system of accountability, mutual accountability, that we will work together to make sure that if we say we're going to get good at something, that we actually get good at it, and we all get good at it. Because we don't want it to be where people are saying, "Jeez, I want to make sure my kid gets this teacher for geometry," or, "I want to make sure my kid gets this third-grade teacher." We want to say, "It doesn't matter because we're all so good," and that we have the expectations in all classrooms that there's going to be high-level work going on. And this last, that last piece that I mentioned, this seventh area of mutual accountability system, is where our integration, one of the places where integration with ANET comes. And Mickey's going to talk to you a little bit about what, how that works and how ANET works in this system of accountability using data.
You going to come back to that?
Yes. Yeah, so I'm Mickey Buell, and I work with ANET. Our official name is the Achievement Network, but everybody, we know ourselves as ANET, and everybody here does as well. ANET is a nonprofit organization based in Boston, and our mission is to work with high-poverty schools around the country. We are located in nine geographic networks, Western Massachusetts being one of those nine networks. So we partner with schools in Springfield, Holyoke, Southbridge, and some other schools in the Western Mass area. And when we partner with schools, we try to do so through three core buckets. The one people tend to know us by are the assessments and the data that comes out of those assessments, and the tools we have to help teachers make sense of that data. But what I think is the most valued when we get feedback from leaders that's having to hear yourself, is the coaching support around how should we use this data to help us improve the instruction. And the third bucket is the network, that we have a network of schools, and we try to bring the expertise of that network of schools to them. Now, as we, as we talk about where we start, most people see as, it's about the tests or about the data, and we're really not. We're about the standards and the instruction necessary to help kids reach these standards. And with the Common Core coming in, it's never been more important to have our teachers really understand what it takes to master these highly challenging, complex standards. And all of our data is aimed at helping them do that. Why don't you go to the cycle? So we work with schools around the data cycle, and the, there's really four components of it, and this can look complicated, but it's really pretty simple. The first step in yellow is plan, and that's your initial plan at this stage. You have to know what it is you're aiming to teach, and have your planning hit those standards in some detail. Then, after you've provided that classroom instruction, you go to the red box, and you give an assessment to check, how well did students learn what we just taught them? Then we go down to the blue section, the teachers get a chance to step back and look at that data, and say, "Okay, I know I taught them these standards, here's the holes where they still exist for specific kids." And I was going to show you the, our data tool, this projection makes it so small it's really tough to see, but one of the pieces that's super powerful is, the data was loaded into, I'll might ANET website, and the teachers can go there and really mine very quickly information about exactly what
information about exactly what their students understood and didn't understand. So then, when we go to that box in the lower left-hand corner, the reteaching, we know we're not trying to reteach this entire standard, we're getting focused on, okay, if they struggle with dividing fractions, what aspect of dividing fractions they struggle with, pinpoint that and instruct them in that time. Then, the last step is we step back, we do a quick reassessment, we step back, say, okay, what changed? Well, when we do that reassessment, every time we go in, and it's definitely through Southbridge, student scores on that standard go up considerably, sometimes thirty, forty This whole cycle is complicated the first time through. And this is our second year working with schools in Southbridge. And last year, much of us understand, how do you manage the pieces of this data cycle? How do you help teachers understand the purpose behind the data? How do you help them understand why the test questions are so far above what we were used to? How do you help them make sense of the data and come out with a really targeted reteaching plan to do it in a time-efficient way? Now, I think the second year around, the school leaders especially, I think many of the teachers perceive, that this whole thing is really almost embedded professional development about the Common Core standards. What do these standards really call for? What does mastery look like? How's that can be measured on impact so that we can prepare for it for that very high power of the test?
Complicated work. We work heavily with your principals and with the instructional coaches, the IRSs here. Let's go to the next piece. And these are the practices that we really work heavily with them on. Effective planning for standards, we've got examples for each of these in there that's happening with your schools currently. Effective data meetings, really knowing how, as leaders, do you shape your teachers' understanding of the data? Effectively to follow, and this is where Brett and I have really been working heavily with all of your instructional leaders, from the principals to the assistant principal to middle school, to the instructional coaches at all the sites, is how, as leaders, can we go into the classroom, understand the lesson planning, understand the instruction, and help the teacher make that more targeted, more effective, and so that we see better outcomes? And then finally, using the data to help target where that support should go, both to the student level and target to the teacher level where the support needs to go. We've seen some real growth over the, into this second year. And I think the next slide should be a data snapshot. There's all kinds of data we could bring. Could flood you, but here's a quick snapshot. So this is Charlton Street Math, and what it shows is a gap between the school's score and the average score for our network. And the network is defined as all the schools in Massachusetts that we work with that took the same assessment. So the, for grade three there, it says A two last year, it's the second of four assessments that they took throughout the year. And on A two, last year, grade three was seven points above the network average, which is very good. Grade four was at, right at the network average, and grade five was four points below the network average. So that was last year's A two. Now, this year's A two, and you can see significant jumps in all three grades. Now, I can, what we try to do in our work with schools is to connect the practice, leader practice, with the student outcomes. And it's very clear here at Charlton Street, West Street especially, with the continuing they've had with administration and instructional leaders, that they are making it. Last year for A two, the teachers, we were in the data meetings, and there was a lot of confusion, there's a lot of, how am I supposed to use this? Why are the questions so hard? If I could take a little video of last year's A two, or a little video of this year's A two data meeting, you'd see the teachers here zooming right onto the computers, getting to the data, looking at, okay, what was about that standard that the student didn't understand, and coming out with outcomes and designing plans. So the practices here have improved, so this makes sense to us that this data jumps. If you go to the next, there's just another snapshot, West Street. You can see that West Street last year was further behind, and West Street had a whole lot of practice moves for that, and West Street had an administrator, a lot of change happened at West Street. You see the gains this year have been tremendous. A lot of good work done by ANET, instructional leaders and teachers, really a lot of good work. They made huge progress throughout that period into this year. Put the same slide up there for the middle school, and this is the area of concern, so when Pat and Buzz and Brett and I step back and talk, okay, where, where do we want to take focused action, it's the middle school math scores. Middle school math scores, not surprising to you, I'm sure, are the area of greatest concern, and we put a lot of effort into helping to improve those. And a lot of the instructional coaching that Brett has led has been aimed at helping get all hands on deck in the middle school into helping lift those math scores. And we've seen some really good things happening. In fact, I communicated with Buzz and Pat a week or two ago about some really positive moves at the leadership level that is starting to push some changes at the teacher level.
I think that's it. Do you have a wrap-up?
Yes, so, so I just wanted to mention that Mickey was talking to you about the work that they're doing, and I mentioned how that sort of integrates in several places, but Area Seven is the most pronounced of that framework. So that area, figuring out when we're holding ourselves accountable to something, what is it going to be? We're going to say we're a good school, I don't think that's true. If we're improving, how can we show that that improvement is great? And, and a lot of the seven-area framework that we talked about is designed around trying to make sure that we're very clear and intentional around the lessons learned from schools that have done great work and have achieved their goals for student achievement, how have they done so? And it isn't something crazy, it's not something, it's not rocket science, it's simple, really strong leadership actions. But they involve a couple of things that are challenging. One is skill. So we do professional development, once a month, we do leadership teams, we bring them together all to one place, we work on some aspect of that seven-area framework. And the other parts of the workshops that we have with them, there's the month that Mickey mentioned, is some coaching, some leadership coaching. So Mickey will be in the buildings, I'll be in the buildings, and we'll be coaching leadership around how to make sure that what we expect, we are expecting, and we're looking for it, and we're giving people feedback, and moving their work in a direction. And then also, the idea that it takes a lot of will, a lot of leadership will to make things happen. In the schools, we always talk about the knowing and doing gap. We know what a really good school looks like, it's been rough candy across the country, but getting it to have is a challenge. So having this framework in place, having people in the right seats on the bus, having conversations that are the right ones to be having, focused on the data, what the data's telling us, is critical in the improvement that we all want to see in Southbridge schools. So just, this document that you see here is one you'll see many times again. I know Buzz has worked very hard to make sure that this is clear to all the schools that that's where we're moving. So you'll see it in a lot of places around the district. And the work that we're doing is designing support for Southbridge Moves and work ourselves out of a job. What we want to do is get the skills, the skillset of leadership so strong, they will be, if you're with Brett Bishop anymore, that they'll be, little by little, taking this over on top of you. So we want to open it to questions, folks, over what you just heard. Are there any questions that you have?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Pleasure to meet you. Thank you, same to you. My first question is about your seven areas of focus. Are those, the, you have the headings, and then underneath you've got like three or four bullets per area of what that focus is about. Are those focus points unique to our district alone, or is that what everybody who participates in Focus on Results, that's the genuine or the, your thing?
Yeah, that's the framework, the seven-area framework that we use in all, our work is generally around different places, either school turnaround or the degree. And that leadership framework is really used in all schools, in schools of special needs.
So, okay, yeah.
Not crazy, I hate it, there's certain things, but in all schools, parts are going on and being very important.
No, that's okay. I was just wondering, does it at any point become customized? And if it went?
Yeah, exactly. Because that seven-area framework is the launching point, but after that, districts or every district that is a school, every school comes to their own instructional focus. So you have, you have three elementary schools in this district, one being a private X school, the other being the other grades, but they're literally several miles apart, but kids, ages different, the staff's different, the needs are different, so they talk to their own instructional focus. So initially, we talk about a common instructional focus, but then they all go and correct us and ask me the questions. And how their approach needs to look seven areas might be different, although there are some things the same. We like to call that concept that you're describing, bounded autonomy, where every school has autonomy, but there are some problems, there's some things that we don't, that for all schools we do, and then after that, things are different. Very much the same to me saying in the classrooms. We don't want teachers to be robots, we don't want them to be clones, we want something to be common. We want school leaders to be saying, yes, if you work here, there are some things that we all do. Not that every classroom is the same, but there are some things that we look for, like best practices that we all do.
Thank you. You mentioned that, well, a couple of the slides showed math, but I just wanted to clarify, our kids are being tested in ELA as well. It's not just strictly math, right?
Yeah, so we provide assessments, ELA and that, and they take those assessments four times a year. ELA decision, we do that three times this year, just the timing of the ELA test. And then for both of those subjects, they get to step back and look at that data, make adjustments. And it's really quite different what we do, we add in ELA, and the reason is, ELA standards, there are ten standard, kindergarten, twelve, they're running those same ten standards, and they continuously make it up. So there, we're really trying to understand what kind of analysis and text is required by the autonomy standards. We've already had shifted the teaching of ELA quite significantly with the new standards. And so we really have, what kind of analysis do kids have to do to make sense of task levels determined by the standards, particularly levels determined by the best and part, not far away. And therefore, what kind of instruction do we have to provide on a regular basis for classroom to pick? So because of that, it's not quite as pinpoint to specific errors, because ELA is sort of comprehensive, all tied together. Whereas in math, we've got very specific standards, various different skills and conceptual objects students need. And so there, we are guiding the very specific sub-skills of a standard that, and our website will help, for every standard, we help break it down into what we call objectives. And with regard to math, conceptual objectives, what concepts students need to understand about math in this math standard, what procedures, procedural objectives they need to be able to do, and how do I have to apply that in real-world settings for the objective? Now, that is complex stuff, and why, with our coaching, it's really all about the standards and instruction that they get there, but the data is a wonderful, powerful tool to help teach the objective.
So the test itself is standardized in the sense that it's created from ANET, and everybody who is a part of your Achievement Network will take the same test on the same standard. Where it gets different is, once you analyze the results of those tests to find out what standards certain children did not achieve, we'll say for lack of a better term. When the reteaching takes place, is that where our teachers step in? And are you a part of creating what the lesson would look like for a reteach? Or is that strictly our people?
So you remember the data cycle slide? You just split that.
Sure.
Last year, when we really started with schools, we started with data. What do you do with this data when it comes out? And to talk about where the specialization happened. Last year, we would say, let's take all fourth-grade teachers, let's pick one standard that was a challenge for students in that across the fourth grade, and let's collect the right targeted reteach plan to hit that standard. That was to learn the process. Now, teachers go into their individual data. In the middle schools, if they have multiple sections, they went to each section's data, and they see which standard did my class most challenge with, and which students in my group had this conceptual error, and which students in my group understood the concept but couldn't execute the procedure. And so we help them, and so a lot of my coaching is to help them get to that point of, how can I understand that, and then what instructional moves do I make to try to fill those specific holes? Very specialized at the point of the data analysis.
So then, once that piece is done, are our kids retested again on that standard to see that the teacher got it right the second time around?
That's right. So you see there in that lower left-hand corner, the reassessment? So the teachers will also redesign a very quick reassessment to get some information about that. And then that green reflection meeting, which I think next week, I'm going to be going to the middle school for their, one of their reflection meetings, they take those results and they look at what changed. And then the key is, and this is where the data is not the goal, they look at what changed, and they, and they start to reflect on, what instructional moves did I make that were different that resulted in this change? And those reflection meetings this year have been quite powerful in helping people see, oh. So, for example, a conclusion that came in ELA is, I did less pre-teaching of the content. So there's, the text that we were going to use was content that students were unfamiliar with. In the past, I've taught them all the background knowledge they needed to know, pre-taught some vocabulary, then we jumped into the text, and that, one of the emphasis of the Common Core is, get them into the text, teach everything through the text, because that's what the heavy emphasis is. So we talked about that, and they did that in one of their reteach lessons, and they said, takeaway I have from this, I'm going to get the kids into the text more quickly. So those are the instructional conclusions that we aim for.
Okay, my final question, and then I can, so I can turn the floor over, I know other people have questions. I just wanted to confirm that currently, right now, only children in grades two through eight are part of this network, is that right?
That is correct. So ANET only provides tests, we started with grades three through eight. And then many of our member schools asked us if we could go down to second grade. We're actually in the process of experimenting with a 10th grade assessment. That won't be something that's up and running in Massachusetts for next year, it could be beyond that, but yes.
Okay, thank you both very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Dr. Domingo?
I'd like to go to the very beginning of the presentation. Thank you, by the way. You have said something that is very disturbing to me. You said you, you really are focusing on economically disadvantaged, poor districts.
And that would be ANET, yeah.
Right. Why would approach to a poor, economically disadvantaged district in terms of performance be any different than for economically not disadvantaged public school?
That's a good question. I don't think that the approach would be any different. Our, our company's mission was to help serve districts that face the greatest challenges. So there's no question that the disparity in outcomes is dramatic across the country. So our founder, John Maycock, founded the company in order to serve that need. So when we, when we choose to begin a relationship with districts, our orientation is, we're here to help low-income, primarily urban districts meet the needs that their students have. It would be a very same approach, similar to the question that Ms. Donovan asked of Brett with the Focus on Results. The seven focus areas, if you read any of the strong books about leadership, those are the same areas across all districts. Oftentimes, the challenges are greater in schools that serve low-income students.
I still don't, I don't understand the relevance of drawing an equal sign between being poor and being underperforming. We have had great examples across, you know, New York State Harlem has some of the best schools in the nation, and they're not necessarily economically advantaged. I, I don't like the sound of that. I don't like being identified that because we may not have as many resources, or maybe we don't have wealthy families, that automatically, you know, is, is going to lead us to underperformance. I, a hundred percent disagree with that. I don't think that economic status of anybody has anything to do with quality of schools, that's where we come in. It's not the wealth of a family that assures the instruction, we're talking philosophy now, and I just could not pass that up. And I think if we start identifying ourselves as such, again, we are disadvantaging our own approach, saying in the end, if things don't work, well, what else did we expect? This is who we are. No, I refuse, I absolutely refuse to believe that. I would like to be treated just like any district would be, and I would like to be offered tools, actually, tools that work the best in the district that have gone the highest, not the district that have gone incrementally higher, such as Holyoke and Springfield. I don't want those plans.
So that's a great point. And where we basically serve our schools are districts and schools that are low performance, right? So the economic level happens to be a high correlation in the country, but the point is, we're there to help lift the performance. Now, the tool, the company's strategies developed early on out of partnerships with some of the charter schools in the Boston area, that were one of the, some of the leading vanguard schools, charter schools across the nation, and they're among the highest-performing charter schools in the nation. So those schools, Boston-
So those schools, Boston College, at Excel Academy, Academy of Pacific Rim, those schools really are who we work with to shape our practices. And the practices that we bring through that data cycle are largely from those highly successful schools. So it's definitely about performance.
That sounds a lot better already.
Okay, I'm glad.
Thank you very much. It's really, no, no, seriously, and you have to understand why I reacted the way I reacted. It's, you know, this is not the best way to make friends, right? When you introduce something that, but if you tell me that you have practices that have been in place or developed, but the best performing school in Massachusetts, that's all I need to hear. And I thank you, and I apologize for maybe a detour. But the second question, I think, is going to be where we need to go next. So you said you are developing your own tests and evaluation instruments for the progress, correct?
ANET creates tests to try to approximate what the MCAS is like, but hit those, so instead of trying to wait until MCAS to see how you're doing, see how you're doing multiple points throughout the year so you can do something about it.
And that's my question, how does your assessment compare to MCAS?
So I think that the, I could certainly, you know, Pat could send you an example of one, it would be very easy to do. They look very, very similar to MCAS. So I think that the first-
They look very-
Very similar to MCAS. I think the first reaction that teachers have when they first come to school, like, oh, wow, this is, this looks like MCAS, you know? I had a comment from a student in one of the schools, not here in Southbridge, who, after they took the MCAS lecture, said, ah, MCAS was easy. They say, MCAS is ANET's baby. It was like, it was like totally in unison. Now, our team, the other thing that our team does is, we work really hard with this majorly changing landscape across the nation with Park and Smarter Balance coming in to be, to replace all the state-level tests. We work really hard staying in touch with what those assessments are going to look like. And I think that if our company as a whole has gotten sort of universal praise from the education establishment, is that the quality of the assessments is as high as anybody out there has created. And so I think as we shift into Park, that's going to be a big, I know that's a huge focus for us, is how do we help schools know what is Park, is going to be coming with Park?
So if I, you know, extend what you just have said into correlation or predictability, would it be fair to say that if we're using your system and having our students go through your assessment, the data coming out of that should be fairly predictable of MCAS outcomes?
Actually not. The purpose of our assessments is not to do a dipstick measure of how you're doing. The purpose of our assessments is to give teachers information about what students learn from what you've just taught in order to do something about it. So this is assessment for instruction, not assessment of instruction. So our tests are not normed in the same way that the MCAS is, and we don't produce scores in the same way that MCAS does. And so it's not at all meant to be predictive of MCAS results. It is supposed to be informative to the teacher at the instructional level. Now, so the way that we sort of help schools say, okay, well, how are we doing getting better? Since the network is fairly robust, we say if you use that comparison to the network score and see how are you doing relative to the other schools in the network, that's a pretty good gauge of whether you've got things moving in the right direction.
Can you just take a snapshot of schools that are on the network and the schools that are not? For example, in Massachusetts, where would those compare? Well, clearly, because you are dealing, you identified primarily-
We work with-
Low-income, underperforming, troubled, troubled school districts. So your averages for sure of performance or success in delivery of information, right? Not student scores necessarily, really are not on par with the rest of the state in districts that don't need help. Do I understand that right?
Explain that question. I'm not exactly sure what the question is within that. Tell me.
So your averages that you're comparing us to are not state averages?
Are not.
State of Massachusetts averages, they're averages of poorly performing districts.
It's the combination in Massachusetts, we have a lot of charter school partners. Our original partners were all charter schools, and those charter schools were very high performing. And so, so to be, to have the numbers be above the network average, a pretty good sign. But that's again where the absolute score isn't indicative of MCAS because it's not meant to sample Massachusetts. So the purpose is to give information about what to do next. The fact that we're not measuring, comparing to a representative sample of Massachusetts would be another reason why it wouldn't be an accurate predictor of MCAS scores per se.
I understand that, but it bothers me again that, you know, that we're somehow analyzed within the group of very similar problematic schools, and is that really the data that we want that is going to give us that leap that is going, you know what I mean? I mean, again, content-wise.
What I'm getting is that there's sort of this conversation, we're in this group of schools that is underperforming-
Yeah.
And so being compared by others.
And we're doing just as well as Holyoke, for example. Well, that's just not good enough for me.
Yeah. But if you remember what we said, Dr. Domingo, is that the purpose is not the data. The purpose is the instruction. And the practices that focus on results outlines in their seven points, and the data cycle that ANET bases everything on, and these practices work on, that's the focus. And if we get the practices going in the right direction, those are the practices that all educational literature and all experience with successful schools say are absolutely fundamental to school improvement. So the data is purely a tool, and the purpose of the tool is not to compare how we're doing to other schools. The purpose of the tool is to inform what we're going to do instructionally in the classroom. So it's all about those practices.
But if the practices are not giving you data that you want, why do we need those practices?
What data would you?
Well, data is the performance, right? That's what the goal eventually is, to implement the practices that will have our students performing well, which is measured in points or measured in-
Ultimately, we want the MCAS scores to go up, right?
Right.
So I mean, that's the ultimate goal. So ultimately, so the ANET data is not going to be the measure that says whether you're getting better, it's the MCAS that's going to say whether things are getting better. Last year, we saw improvements at West Street, Charlotte Street on MCAS. And that's the goal. And the continued goal is continued increase and accelerated increase.
Thank you. I don't want to take all the time. Thank you, Madam Chair. Anybody? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, gentlemen. I share a lot of Dr. Domingo's concerns regarding being compared to the network. And I think it's great that we're above the network, but to say that we're, I guess my first question would be, how many of the 119 schools in the network are high-performing charter schools?
The 119 number was for ELA for math, it would be a smaller number because we hit with grade levels. I would say, so I don't know for sure, but my top of my head would be, there would be 30 to 40% of the Massachusetts network would probably be in charter school, maybe 30%?
So I think the challenge is, MCAS, we're compared to every district, every school in the state. We're the highest-performing state in the country. Now, we're putting data, which we're not saying is data based on what children are learning, but it's assessing instruction, the needs based in instruction. So the instruction that we're delivering to the students in our district would be a percentage higher than, say, 80 of the lowest-performing schools in the state.
So let me, let me-
If we take that 30 or so out.
So the data that I showed you is not the data that teachers use.
Right.
Right? So this is just to give you a real basic snapshot. With what's on the screen there, do you see that on your iPads?
No.
No?
We have this on our iPads, but the data that you had wasn't forwarded to us, no.
What I'd hope to do is show you the data that the teachers use. And that data is where the action is at. What I showed you is just a quick, one way to look at some results, midpoint results on what's working and not working. The data that matters is the data about individual standards and how children, in math, and how children manage individual texts and standards in ELA. And when they get into the data, it talks about performance on individual items, which students chose which, which of the wrong answer choices, and what the wrong answer choice indicated their confusion might have been. That's what it's all about. And the, and the, one of the measures of improvement is when you get that reassessment after that reteach. If that goes up, okay, we see we made an impact then. And then we want to step back and capture those practices that we, that we made instructionally and make the move. Because one of the things that Brett is always saying in all of our leadership meetings is, it's about the instruction. All of our leadership have to be hitting what happens in that instructional triangle between the student, the teacher, and the curriculum. And that's what this data is aiming for.
And I understand that. I think my concern becomes expectation. If our expectation for our students and our instruction that is delivered to students is that, that 119 groups that are participating in the network, if that's our goal, that is absolutely abysmal to me. And I think our kids deserve instruction that exceeds that. And I think these little spots where we can highlight what is missing is excellent, and that's a step in that direction. But I think when parents get home a newsletter that says, we're 7% above the network in this, and we're 8% above the network in that, that gives a false sense of where we are compared to the rest of the state. And then when we get MCAS scores, we say we're 7% higher than the network, however, our MCAS scores are horrific. They've improved since last year, but they're nowhere close to where they need to be. So I think that is the standard and the expectation, and to expect that children that come from disadvantaged, low-income homes, that that's the goal for them, to me, is atrocious. And I don't think that that's what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I think that the data that's been put out to parents and hearing that is what that sends home. And I know, as a person, that is, that is a mediocre benchmark, and that I think we need to expect more of the instruction that our students receive, and expect more of our students. So I won't belabor that point, but I think that was what I needed to say.
Can I just mention something, too? Because I'm in lots of districts and lots of districts using different, every district has a different assessment that they're using. Everybody is using, sometimes people call it checkup and autopsies. Everybody uses the same autopsy because it's MCAS. You know, the instructions already happened, how did it go, kind of thing. The interim assessments are different, no matter what district you're in. And one of the things that I, that's always a challenge in every district, is trying to decide, are we using an interim assessment that will be a reliable predictor for whether or not kids do well on MCAS? And that's a discussion in almost every district that I'm in, including some that use ANET and others that do not. And it's challenging. The thing that I, my experience with, the two pieces that I think are really significant, one is, is it a report card for us on how we're doing in progress with MCAS? That's an important piece of information for us as a general public and as leaders in the school district. The other piece that Mickey's referring to, which, from putting my principal hat on for a minute, and just someone who's worked in, it's basically the only place I've worked in have been turnaround schools, and I'm very passionate about the work that you're doing here in Southbridge because it matches what I've done in my career, is the places where we can quantify for instructional personnel, what are the deficits that kids have toward the accepted standards that we're going, whatever state we're in, now is Common Core, that is where the heaviest lifting of this work that we're talking about in school improvement resides. And being able to identify that and help teachers to know, what is it that the kids are missing? How can I adjust my instruction to meet there? That is where the goal lies, right there, in the improvement. So just from my perspective, to know that that's the work that your teachers are doing, I can't stress enough, that is a place where, that is where you're going to see the improvement that we all want to see, the goals that we all want to see kids hit in Southbridge, that's where it's going to happen, right there.
And to build on that, you, what are some of the best practices that we've determined, we expect from teachers in Southbridge?
So, so in each school, what they do is they take their instructional focus and they say, okay, using this instructional focus, we're going to try and decide what we think the best practice would be that would support them. As I mentioned, one of the keys is to say a narrow set. So we, our rule is three, no more than five. Most places we want to do, three is enough. But we want to say we're going to use high-leverage practices that are research and evidence-based to provide progress toward our student achievement goals. So for example, in a couple of your schools, one of the things they looked at was, what are practices that research tells us are really good, that we maybe already know some things about, have already had some professional development about, and have shown the progress that we think is going to help our kids. So for example, in some schools, they say, they take, they choose an instructional practice that is called Keys to Literacy, which is, in your district, something that they have already had a lot of professional development on, was embedded in reading comprehension, they had a lot of professional development in place. So it was one of the reasons that they chose it, because they felt we can really get some good work here. We've got some people in the building who are already really good with these practices, and we can get others to get there. The choices that they make, they evaluate whether or not they're good choices based upon student achievement. So if the kids are doing better because we're doing the practice, that means it's a good practice. If they're not, then it isn't what we should be doing. It's all, it's not about, you know, a recent workshop that I went to, or my favorite practice, or something that we like, it's about what's going to produce the leverage for us. So that's how we evaluate it. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Okay.
Thank you.
And each of your schools, one of the things you can do is, each of your schools has a pretty clear definition of their best practices and what it looks like in schools. So if a school community would like to see those, they could certainly, you know, have this email to you, sent to you. You can see the progress that they're making, and that determines when people are visiting classrooms to follow up, you know, an inspection of what we inspect, that's what they're looking for.
Another question that I had was, part of the presentation was engaging parents, and the question that I had was, we have celebrated kids that have scored 100 on the ANET, their ANET tests, whatever, they've gotten, whatever.
Yeah.
Awards, well-deserved.
Yeah.
However, parents that children didn't get 100 have no idea how their kids did. That's, I think, a challenge. If you want parents to be engaged with this whole process, the only kids that are getting recognized or parents are receiving information about are those children that received 100. So I don't know if my kid got a 10, a 90, a 95. So I think that that, communicating that with parents so that they understand what the ANET is and what that is telling them, because-
So it's an area of opportunity, it sounds like, in the district. And one of the things that the schools are working at is this idea of, when you're doing the kind of work that you're talking about in leading schools in going from good to great or school turnaround, relentless communication is one of the most central pieces, whether it's with the staff, stakeholders who work in the building, or with parents and community. And so being clear about what are we looking for from kids? How can I help them at home? What can I do that, if I did this every night with my kids, what would help them? That kind of thing, because to all of us, you know, we love our kids, we want the best for them, but most of us, if we don't work in education, I don't know what the best thing to do at home was, but if my school told me, I would do it. So it's one of the pieces that they'll be working on as they're going through this process.
Thank you for your commitment to our district and trying to impact our student achievement for the better. Thank you.
Our pleasure.
Mrs. Quinney?
Questions as to not belabor the evening. On the ANET test, are we evaluating the ELL and special ed kids on this test specifically?
All students take the test. All students who take the MCAS, we take the test. Schools can decide how to do that, but in general, the point is to see how are they doing on the standards they're going to have to perform at on the MCAS. So most schools in Southbridge decide that we'll have all students who would take the MCAS take the test.
So all students just take the same test, and then it's just treated as a whole class?
Correct. I mean, so the, if the students are going to have to meet the same standards, and all students except those with IEPs that define different standards, or who are new enough to the state with a second language that they're exempted from the MCAS, are expected to meet those MCAS standards. So the goal of the ANET test is to say, okay, based on the standards that you've just taught there, how well do the students do? So yeah, all students take that, and then the data comes back for every individual student.
And are we seeing improvements in that demographic?
So we've talked about that, coming in, we were just talking about it earlier tonight, that when you look at the MCAS data, the subgroups for students in special education in ELL is really a- in ELL is really a, a big, big gap. And we are, we are starting in some places to work specifically on what kind of instruction is provided for students in those subgroups. Remember, today, that's what I was doing with one of the schools. But I think that before you can get highly effective there, the general framework has to be in place. So there has to be an understanding of these best prac... We're, we're really heavily about best leadership practices that would get to those teacher practices. And so getting those best leadership practices in place is really the key. So I think Charlton Street and West Street, so we work with the three schools, Charlton Street, West Street, and the middle school. Charlton Street, West Street are further ahead in that because they've had continuity. Of course, the middle school had such a tumultuous year last year. Sort of establishing some basic leadership focus. We haven't really focused in on that subgroup at that site yet.
When will you be?
I think that right now, the focus at the middle school needs to be math for everybody. And it would be a bit of a mistake just to try to focus in below that right now because the data, and the MCAS data and the ANET data is similar, shows that the middle school math is very high priority across the board.
My other question is, I just worry about the stamina of the kids taking the four ANET tests and then taking the MCAS. You wonder if they're just tested out by that point and here comes the MCAS and let's just fill in a bubble, or, because they've taken all those ANET tests. What do you find in your experience with that?
Those are real concerns, and I share them. And so like Brett, I was a principal for many years before this, and it's a genuine concern. What we find is, it really comes down to the leadership and the vision that they set with the teachers. If the staff of the school sees a real purpose behind that data and they think that data's going to help them to help the kids, the messages they give the kids are usually very strong and the kids see a purpose in the tests. Every school that I've been in where the, the staff in an organized way brings the data to the students, so the students are part of thinking about their data, which is possible in basically every grade is three of them, there is a significant boost in student engagement with the tests and the results. And so I think it's actions like that that really make the difference. It is exhausting. They're tough tests, they're really hard. And to do them multiple times during the year with MCAS coming up is tiring. If there's a clear purpose, if, if it's used effectively, if the students can identify, this is an area where I want to work on, and then there can be effective communication with students about what, what happened there, well, then I think engagement goes up hot. And that's definitely what we've seen across our network. Good question.
Who administers the test?
So the school administers it. Some schools will decide to do it exactly as they would administer the MCAS, and it's a, that's a big production. Some schools will decide to do it more or less like you do the MCAS, but not having to make every adjustment to the school schedule and structure. But the school administers the, the test. There's a, within ANET, we have a point person in every school who, in our terms, called the Data Assessment Coordinator, who helps to coordinate the administration of that test.
Clarify my question. Here in Southbridge, who gives the test? Is it the classroom teacher?
It would be more than just a classroom teacher. So similar to MCAS, you would have students that have to break out into subgroups based on accommodations within IEPs and sometimes ELL accommodations. And so you'd have testing groups that would be more than just a classroom teacher would be involved in that. But when, when, like when the MCAS is administered, everybody at those grade levels would be involved in the administration, and it's quite close to that for the ANET assessments as well.
And how much time is given for the test? How long does it take?
So every school can do that differently. So some schools set a time limit, some schools do it unlimited time because the MCAS is It would vary some grade level, but it would be, in general, the schools that have set limits set about two hours would be the time limit they would set.
Is that for math or both math and ELA?
That would be for one. They're administered on separate, separate bases.
Okay. So two hours for math, two hours for ELA. And, sorry, one last question.
Yeah.
When we do the focus on, on results, we're measuring how the student's doing as well as how the teacher's doing. So is the principal or whoever, the IRS specialist evaluating the teacher based on the student performance? And the reason for that question is, looking at the scores, there's 14 children that scored 100% on the math. I know nine of them have the same classroom teacher. So I don't know how that spans, if that person will be made a model, or how, can other teach, how, why is that?
Sure.
So, so let me, let me, I think you, you mentioned in terms of evaluation of teachers, every district has their own determination of how evaluation, the teacher evaluation is done. It's part of the contract, it's, you know, and evaluations are generally done by administrators, not by colleagues in the teacher pool. So, so that's, I think, the evaluation of people is something separate from maybe what I'm hearing in your other question, where if there was to be in a, in a grade level, whether it was ANET or any other assessment, where it was clear to us that some really good data keeps generating out of this one classroom, absolutely, we would want to learn from what's happening in there. And that's one of the things that is really helpful about knowing how we quantify, if things are going well, how do we know they're going well? Because we wouldn't want to waste an opportunity in any school where if the data that we're seeing is consistently really powerful out of one place, we could learn from that. That's a resource that we own. It's right here in our own school district. And so that's one of the things, becoming clear about how we assess how we're doing well is really helpful, because we can do both. If we know, let's say, I'm making this up, it's not anything about your district, but if we know there's a teacher, brand new, first year out of college, really struggling, the data's not as good, we're flooding support to that person, just as we would if the student was struggling, to say, okay, so here's what this is going to look like, here's what best practice is going to look like, here's why we have IRSs in our district, to flood support there. On the same token, if we have someone down the hallway who is generating tremendous data and kids are really learning, we want to learn from that and have, maybe even have that person who's down the hall come visit and see what it looks like so that we can build that practice. The idea is, when we say best practice, we want best practice to become common practice.
And that's that area too, focus on results, is the collaborative environment and having that culture where the ANET scores are for us as teachers to understand what to do instead of judges of us as teachers is really critical. And in our contract, we explicitly say, teachers cannot be formally evaluated based on their ANET data. It's expressly not what we want. And that fear that every teacher has of, oh my God, am I going to be judged on this? We, we have to fight through that area too, to have leaders shape the culture to say, this is about what we're going to do about it, not judging who's right, who's, who's good, who's not. But absolutely, and this is happening regularly at the schools, where teachers who are seeing spikes in data in certain areas are talking to each other and through organized and informal ways about, okay, what, what did you do? And that is a great outcome for every school.
I just have one question. In your data slide, that cycle slide, you go from data meeting to reteaching, reassessment, reflection, and incorporate the lessons learned. If at that point, it is not marked as improvement, what's the action plan after?
Mark an improvement for an individual student.
For the group in itself. So you showed, could you go back to that slide? Yeah, the middle school math, it was. Here, we didn't show any improvement, or maybe there was slight improvement. This is just one cycle. I mean, what is, what is the break off of that? If this does not work, the reflection meetings, the reteach and the reassessment, what is the plan? And is there a plan in place for this?
So you're asking really the big, big question. How do we make sure that our instructional practices are growing continuously? The, the cycle, if you go back to the cycle, Brett, the cycle is just one, a series of steps that you should be thinking about instructionally to see how things are going. This is continually moving, right? So if you're using interim assessments, most schools will use two, three or four interim assessments for each subject area throughout the year. So this would happen three or four times. But in terms of the long term, the challenge is, how do we, as educational leaders and teachers, institute practices consistently that are strong, effective, and growing? And, and so the, the middle school math has been a challenge in a big way. It's not that, if the middle school math doesn't grow, it's not that, okay, the cycle didn't work. It's a question of, what practices did we exert as leaders and teachers throughout this very natural teaching and learning cycle? And how effective were they? I think that some of the work that we've done this year, which Buzz and Pat have really played a key role in, in helping establish what should the instructional leaders be doing to help the teachers make that instruction effective, has really been good. It's not going to produce immediate results, but I think that there are some things moving in the right direction there. And, and last year was tough to say that things were moving in the right direction in terms of the, the teacher and leader practices. But, but I think that there are some things moving there, and that's, that's the key, is keep it going in a positive way, keep it growing and growing and growing, and hopefully be able to consistently do that.
I read in one of the earlier slides that it, this will help in assisting teachers to develop lesson plans. Now, let's say the teachers already have a lesson plan in place. Is that to say that this is in addition to their lesson plan? Or is it just to cater or define their lesson plan?
To help make that lesson plan more effective.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
I just have, I hope, is a very quick question. You talked about time limits. Thank you for coming, by the way, appreciate this.
Yeah, thank you for having us.
You talked about, just in the conversation with time limits, and I'm going back to the Charlton Street and West Street School slides, where there was growth at both schools, you know, over the last year. West Street in particular had higher growth. What is that attributable to? So in other words, could a, could a different, could a factor be the fact that one of the schools gave the students an unlimited amount of time and the other school gave a time limit to the students? Do we know that? Are the, are those two schools doing things the same way as far as the administration of the tests?
We do know that, yes, they are. Yeah, they're, they're very good at coordinating on, on many of those basic things. I think the great part is having them increasingly coordinate on instructional moves, and there's some of that happening too.
Anybody else? We're all set? Do you have anything? Pat? No? Thank you very much. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Glad to speak, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anybody want to take a quick break or you want to keep going? We can take, fans turned off? Is there any way to turn the fans off? Do you want a break? Anybody? Or you want a, good? Just go? Okay. There is no report of the Finance Director this evening. There's a budget meeting tomorrow evening. Meeting's open to the public, 5:30 in room M-115? Is it 115? Mr. Osborne's room? Is that his room, his room number? Yeah, I believe it's M-115. And that will be a meeting that strictly focuses on the, reviewing the current budget and working on formulating a budget for the next fiscal year. Now to the report of the Superintendent, Ms. Gardner.
Thank you again. He's regretfully not here. A couple of things that he is working on is the State of the Schools address, and we are also planning the Principal Hiring Committee for West Street School. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Next, we have School Committee Actions. The first action is a vote to accept with appreciation the donation of middle school girls' basketball uniforms from the Pioneer Athletic Booster Association. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Congdon makes the motion. Dr. Domingo seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Dr. Domingo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I would like to thank the Booster Club, obviously, for, for this initiative. I have a question, though, that pertains to our logos and logotypes that are used whenever not school-affiliated necessarily or school-regulated organization is providing uniforms or anything that really reflects Southbridge Public Schools. And I hope that design, the, any, any logotypes that were used were coordinated with the School Department. And that's, that's really a comment more than, than anything else, because if it's not, I, you know, we don't want our students representing something that does not reflect who we are and what we have approved, right? Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Motion carries. Next, we have a vote to approve an anonymous donation of four five drawer lateral file cabinets. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mrs. Congdon makes a motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Motion carries. There is no unfinished business this evening. Moving on to new business, we have the first readings of policy files BDA, BDD, BDE, BDF, BDG, and BE. Do you have a motion to waive the readings of those files?
So moved. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to waive the reading of the policies, Agenda Item 14B, 14C, 14D, 14E, 14F, and 14G.
Thank you, Dr. Domingo. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Is there a discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Did you want to say something?
Yes.
I'm just going to turn it to Mrs. Quinney for a moment.
Sorry. I just wanted to highlight the changes that have been made to the policies, not necessarily read them. For BDA, School Committee Organizational Meeting, we added that any vacancy in the Office of Chair between organizational meetings will be filled by the Vice Chairman. In the event of a vacancy in the Office of Vice Chairman, Secretary, or Recording Secretary, an election will be conducted following nominations from the floor by majority roll call vote, which clarifies some issues we had earlier. On policy file BDD, we changed language on one and two to reflect MASCE recommendations, which state the Superintendent will have the privilege of asking guidance from the Committee with respect to matters of operation whenever appropriate. If it is necessary to make exceptions to an established policy, he or she will submit the matter to the Committee for advice and direction. Number two, the Superintendent will assist the Committee in reaching sound judgments, establishing policies, and will place before the Committee all relevant facts, information, and reports necessary to keep the Committee adequately informed of situations or business at hand in a timely manner. And that was BDD, School Committee Superintendent Relations. Under BDE, we added, which is Subcommittee of the School Committee, all standing Subcommittee appointments shall be made within 30 days following the annual organizational meeting for a period of one year. And we also added under the Subcommittee Descriptions that Subcommittees will be provided with a list of its functions and duties, that a Subcommittee may make recommendations for Committee action but not act on behalf of the School Committee, and all Subcommittees of the School Committee are subject to provision of the Open Meeting Law, which brings them to compliance with the law. That's that. BDF, which is Advisory Committees to the School Committee, we added the following, the following statements should guide the appointment and functioning of Advisory Committees to the School Committee, other than the Student Advisory Committee, the Wellness Advisory Committee, the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, which are all governed by terms of... of Massachusetts General Law. We added Advisory Committees may be created by the School Committee to serve as task forces for special purposes, or to provide continuing consultation in a particular area of activity. Also added, where appointments to such committees will be made by the committee. Appointment of staff members to such committees will be made by the School Committee upon recommendation of the superintendent. And tenure of the committee members will be determined by the School Committee. And under, each committee will be clearly instructing, instruction, instructed to do as. Um, we added, the School Committee Policies governing citizens committees in relationship to these committees, to the Sub, School Committee as a whole, individual School Committee members, the superintendent, other members of the professional staff, and responsibilities for the release of information to the press. All recommendations of Advisory Committees must be based upon research and fact and submitted to the School Committee. The School Committee possesses certain legal powers and prerogatives that cannot be delegated or surrendered to others. Therefore, all recommendations of an Advisory Committee must be submitted to the School Committee, and Advisory Committees created under this policy are subject to the provisions of open meeting law. Those were updates, um, based on, uh, open meeting law and, um, best practices as determined by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. The School Attorney Policy is also, it's very long, so I won't read it, has also been updated, um, based upon best practices within the state and recommendations of the MAS C. And the last one is BE, School Committee Meetings. Um, we added that the schedule will be established thirty days following the annual reorganizational meetings, that special meetings may be made at the request of the chairperson or at least three members. And we also added a provision, um, which most other school districts had adopted regarding emergency meetings, and that reads, "An emergency meeting of the committee shall be held when called by the chairperson of the committee, or upon request of the superintendent of schools, or two or more members. Emergency is defined as a situation in which immediate, undelayed action is deemed by the committee to be imperative. The purpose of such emergency meeting is to discuss items that cannot be held over until the next regular meeting, or until a scheduled special meeting. An emergency meeting shall not include matters previously voted on, or more properly acted upon via reconsideration or rescission. And the notice of such emergency meetings shall state the matters to be considered. At such meetings, only the purpose set forth for the meeting was called shall be in order, except if all members are present. They may, by unanimous vote, take lawful action on some other purposes." And we also added a statement that every meeting of the School Committee, regular, special, or emergency, will be open to the public unless an executive session is held in accordance with state law. So that is a lot of information, and if anyone from the public would like to see these, um, new poli-, um, proposed policies in their draft form, they are posted, uh, on the board across from the Office of People and Personnel Services at 25 Cole Ave. And if you have any questions, you can certainly email me at equinney@southbridge.k12 MA.us. So that is all of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next regular School Committee meeting will be held on Fri- um, on February 11th, 2014, in council chambers. There will be a committee of the whole budget meeting, uh, tomorrow evening, Wednesday, January 29th, at 5:30 in room M-115, at Cole, 25 Cole Avenue. And there will also be a joint School Committee, Education, and Human Services Subcommittee meeting, that's a meeting with the town council, on Tuesday, February 4th, at seven o'clock in Town Hall. Um, that's all there is there. And now, um, are there any members, any open issues, any members would like to speak this evening? Mrs. Congdon?
Um, just, I wanted to congratulate, there was a nice article in the paper on, uh, about Maggie McLaughlin, who was, um, selected for Project 351. She was one out of 350 eighth graders selected, and I just wanted to congratulate her and urge everyone to read that article, um, about Maggie. And the Southbridge Lions Club will be hosting on Super Bowl Sunday, February 2nd, from 7:00 a.m. to noon, a cartoon character breakfast. Um, they have the help of the, um, National Honor Society kids, and, um, some of the Aspira kids will be helping as well. So I urge everyone to go attend that fun event as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else on the side? Mr. Olivo? No. Anything on the side? Oh, Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I was able to attend last night the Family Literacy Bingo Night at Eastford Road School, which was, I've attended a few of these in the past. It was a great success. The kids had a lot of fun, and I think it was a great way to highlight how implementing ideas regarding literacy at home isn't as difficult as we make it. And I wanted to thank, um, Mrs. Rabata, Mrs. Fontaine, Mrs. Trehan, and Mrs. Wayman, and all the other people that volunteered their time to make that evening a success. And that is all. Thank you.
I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Dr. Domingo, seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Show of hands, please. All in favor? Thank you very much, and good night.